All right, first and foremost, I really want to welcome everybody for coming out tonight. The purpose of this is to create a forum, and I'm going to read this because everybody knows how I go on tangents. So, the purpose was to create a forum whereby the citizens of our community can express their concerns and get correct information in regards to the strike. Those that we elected to represent us are interested in your opinions. When you get up to speak, rest assured that they will hear your comments and make decisions in your best and in our best interest. This is being taped and will be available for those who are not able to attend this meeting. We hope the information provided will be beneficial to the entire community. I'd like to thank, Eric is here from the Zion Police Department, and he's going to share some of the rules.
All right, folks, thanks for coming out. My name is Detective Eric Barton with the Zion Police Department. Here just to cover a couple things, we're going to call the meeting into order, and your moderator's going to be Jerry Booth. Timekeeper's going to be Chris Mansky. If you have any questions, please use your hand. First, the rules are, anyone who wishes to speak, please, when announced, form a line behind the podium. Each person will be allowed to speak only once, so that everybody has an opportunity to speak. You'll be, we'll be collecting tickets up here, so you can turn your ticket in. You have to have a ticket to speak, so make sure you bring that with you. Please be respectful with your comments and stick to the topic at hand. I know there's a lot of things that people have on their mind and want to talk about, but let's stick to this. Absolutely no profanity will be allowed. If that can't be followed, you will be escorted off the property. All right? And then, each person, like she said, will be allowed two minutes. We want to have a good night, respectful night, trying to keep everybody out of the clink, so just not having a problem, okay? All right. Just a couple other things. Housekeeping, if you drink, if you bring something, please take it with you when you leave. We're allowed in here free of cost, so it's nice for them to do that. Squeeze in tight if you can, I know there's a lot of people in the back there, we've got, we've got to fit some more people in. And then, if you could, please silence your phones, so we don't have too many interruptions. All right? Any questions or comments or concerns about that? All right, your moderator is going to come on up.
Good evening, I just want to say thanks for coming out tonight. My name is Jerry Booth. I host a morning talk show on 1220 WKRS. They asked me to be a moderator tonight, and I was very happy to do so. I'm here for a couple different reasons. One, I am, I live here in the community at Zion Benton Township. My daughter's a sophomore at the high school, and I have a son that's going to attend there next year. So I do have a lot of concerns, and I really want to find out what's going on as well. Tonight, we do have the attorney, Zion Benton Township High School District Attorney, Tony Figarelli. I hope I didn't mess up your name. Tony's going to come up here and share some facts and information on the current situation. And then after that, people, we'll let you guys kind of line up, and we'll ask questions. Tony, can you kind of come up right now?
Good evening, everyone. When I was asked to speak tonight, I thought initially I was going to be in the crowd like you and just to listen. But given the impact of the negotiations and the influence to the community, I was happy to step up and see if we could at least provide to you some information as far as the process of the negotiations. I want to be upfront with you, though, I guess some, there's some aspects to the negotiations I cannot share with you from a legal perspective and an ethical perspective. So while you may ask questions that may not suit your needs for a specific answer, please forgive me, but I am bound by the conduct of professional conduct or ethics, as well as some legal perspective. So if you can respect that, I appreciate it, and I know you will. The opening comments I have will be brief. The Board of Education, as you may know, has been involved with negotiations with the teachers' union, which began back in approximately April of last year, 2011. And it went through a series of meetings without a federal mediator. We had about six to eight sessions that we tried to reach an agreement, and that's typical in most negotiations. My background is in school law, senior partner with the law firm, Pinchon Culbertson, and we represent about 100 school districts. So we do have some background and expertise in this area. So again, that is a typical process to go through, that the teachers have a right to collectively bargain under the Illinois Education Labor Relations Act, and the employer has the responsibilities and the opportunity to collectively bargain with the teachers' union, who is the authorized representative of all the teachers and classified staff also, which comprises secretaries, parapros. So after about eight sessions, both teams decided that it would probably be better to get a federal mediator in, which is allowed under the Education Labor Relations Act. So a mediator was brought in. There was approximately three or four federal mediation sessions that were engaged in between the union and the board teams. Both teams were diligently at trying to get an agreement with the mediator. However, there was some issues that basically both sides were stuck in, if you will. So as a consequence, impasse was declared by the Board of Education. And under the new provisions of the Labor Relations Act and the school code, the Board posted has required its last, best, and final offer. So if you want the specifics of the last, best, and final offer that the Board offered, go on the Illinois Education Labor Relations Board site, IELRB site. And that has been posted now for a couple of months. Likewise, the union was required to post its last, best, and final offer. So again, you can go on the ILRB website to compare and arrive at your own decisions as far as the terms and conditions of the last, best, and final offer. So after that process then has been, has been completed, then it's up to the parties whether they wish to continue to negotiate with the federal mediator. There was a brief hiatus there between the time that both parties published their last, best, and final offer. And then towards the, towards the end of, or the beginning, I should say, of January, after break, teams got back together and went through a mediation session, again, having full dialogue. The dialogue and the discussions have been very professional, very collegial. There hasn't been yelling and screaming going on and hot tempers. I mean, certainly some anxiety is raised during negotiations on both sides, but they're very professional on both sides. So the last go-around we had was from Wednesday. I'll just give you an idea how hard the board team and union team has been working at this. I believe on Wednesday at 5:00, both teams met. It's 3:00 PM on last Wednesday, and with the federal mediator, and the session did not conclude until 5:00 AM Thursday morning. So that just gives you an idea of these marathon sessions that are going on, that both sides are trying to find some happy medium to get a contract. There's some sticking points that could not be arrived at, so everybody went home, took a shower, presumably ate some breakfast. I spoke to the media, gave several accounts. And then on Friday, both parties resumed at the North Point Arena at 9:00 AM to convene again the federal mediation. The Board had some very creative ideas, especially in terms of the salary and the insurance benefits. Those are two of the primary issues that are the sticking points. And that's not uncommon. I'm sure you, you read in the paper, you hear in the news, that whether it's in the private sector or the public sector, when there's collective bargaining that takes place, you can go through the terms and conditions of working, but at the end of the day, it boils down to salary, wages, and benefits. So we're not unusual with any other school district out there that's going through collective bargaining, nor in the private sector. So on Friday, we convened at 9:00 AM with a lot, with a lot of weary eyes out there. By 10:00 PM, both parties kept moving through, and I think, and again, I'm still blurry-eyed from yesterday morning, we concluded about 3:00, 3:30 AM on Saturday morning. So the, the teams are, are working hard, trying to get an agreement. But again, the issue is, is that we have a strike, we have the students not back in school, so. At this time, we're looking at convening another session, meeting with the, with the union, and we'll have that more crystallized hopefully by tomorrow. So if that gives you any comfort, again, the Board is committed to try to get this resolved. Hopefully, the union will take that same tack. I'm not here tonight to, to take an adverse position against the union or teachers, so if you ask me questions that point to that direction, I'm just going to respectfully decline. Because again, both parties have been extremely professional, the Board has been extremely cognizant of what the, the, the community is all about, how it affects the community. Strikes affect communities, obviously. I've been through several, done through my career. I've been doing this now for approximately 25 years. So I can tell you that the strikes I have been involved with, they are tough. They're tough on the community, they're tough on the Board of Education, they're tough on the administrators, and it's, it's, and obviously, it's tough on the students, although sometimes they like the days off for a while. But in any event, it impacts, it impacts everyone. So, and that, and that hasn't been lost with the Board of Education. So again, the resolve is, is to arrive at a fair and equitable agreement that's financially responsible, because again, we're in hard economic times. We don't, I don't have to tell you anything new here. I mean, it transgresses throughout our state. I, I represent personally over 30-some districts, and every district, and I do some North Shore districts, they're all hurting. I, I live in DuPage County in Naperville, they're hurting. So you're not alone. So every school district in the state right now is struggling. We're struggling also individually, with jobs, cutbacks in hours worked, foreclosure, so it runs the gamut. So I can assure you that this Board of Education is very cognizant of that and is trying to keep within some financial constraints, but yet preserve the quality of your high school district, because it is, they have some quality programs out there that the Board of Education is committed to preserve within the financial constraints of your community. So that plays into it. So again, it's, it's a matter of partnering up, if you will, between the Board of Education, the administration, and the teachers. But sometimes, all parties don't realize or come to grips with some of the circumstances out there, and it takes a while. It takes a while to change paradigms over the years in this community or any community. Change paradigms, change some cultures in the school districts, among teachers, whatever. So again, this is, this is a difficult period you're in. And I, again, I can only tell you that the Board of Education and the administration, especially its superintendent, business manager, the building administrators, principals, assistant principals, are all committed to the school district and hopefully to resolve this strike sooner than later. So with that said, I'm going to defer back to Jerry. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony, I appreciate that. All right, what I'd like to do, if you do have any questions right now, can you guys hear me in the back room? Is that loud enough? All right, if you guys have any questions, if I can get you to, please just kind of line up over here, and...
It's like 10 at a time.
Yeah, if I can get maybe the first 10 people that would like to come up and ask a question or, or make a statement, you go right ahead, sir. If you guys just want to kind of line up over here, that'd be awesome, and I do want to remind you, we're going to keep it to about two minutes, and then we're going to, we're going to move on. Chris here is going to be timing you guys, so that's how we're going to do it. Can I get a raise of hands, how many people are here from Zion? All right, how about Beach Park? All right, do we have any West Harbor people in here, too? All right, can I see the hands of all the women? Okay. Wadsworth as well. I'm sorry, I was thinking about women. All right. And when I said women, I saw George Duke and Samuel, I know. How about all the people that didn't raise their hand? Okay. All right, again, we're going to have, come on, there's got to be more than two people that want to make a statement or a comment. All right, again, I'm going to, we're going to keep it to two minutes. If not, Chris is going to yell at me, and then I'm going to, all right, we'll just keep it to two minutes. Come on.
So I've got to be the first one. My name is Janet Jones, and I live in Zion. I have three grandchildren at Zion Benton High School right now. I am very concerned over the fact that they're not in school. One is a senior, they're very involved in sports, they're missing out on a lot of opportunity. I hear that both sides are working diligently, and I appreciate that, but I'm more concerned with my grandchildren. I feel they need a quality education, so we do need good teachers, we do need to pay them well, but there's an end to the money. And we definitely are at that point in Zion. So I would like to... I, again, I'm not trying to bash anything, I know there's good on both sides. My true heart believes the rank and file are not part of this. My true heart believes the union heads are a big part of it. And I think that we need to let the union people know to leave our teachers alone, they need their salaries, they need their insurance. Any one of them that are out of work right now are hurting, and they, they need to get back to work, and we let, the union should be told, especially when you have a husband and wife who are the head of the union. We do not get much union information. We only hear how bad the Board of Ed is and the superintendent. That's not fair. It's not, it's not a fair playing field, and we need to make it fair. We need to hear from the union. You need to tell us why you cannot compromise. And that's just my statement. Thank you very much.
She has very good time, 15 seconds, so if we could keep her going, come on. I'll try.
My name is Jason Ellis, lifetime Zion resident. Just a few things I want to throw out there. My nephew's going there to Zion Benton right now, I have kids that are in the Zion schools. The Zion, according to the 2010 census, the Zion average median income is $45,000, $50,000 per families. According to a latest Forbes report, Lake County, Illinois has the highest taxes in all of the Midwest. Zion residents pay the highest tax in all of Lake County, so that makes us the highest in all of the Midwest. According to public records, at the end of last school year, 188 non-administrative teachers, only 12 of them are making less than the $45,000 median income. Over 85 teachers, approximately 45 percent, are making over $70,000 a year. This doesn't include the fact that our tax money also goes to their pensions and to their healthcare. 50 percent of Zion Benton teachers do not even, don't even live in Zion, so they're not even paying, paying into this, all this money that we, we have. Reports after reports on the US Department of Education, the Illinois Department of Education, the more money we've thrown at schools, the worse our students have done. And that's a fact. 200 percent increase in education spending over the last 10 years, and our schools have gotten worse. We're at 35 percent, according to the state. The state average is 80 percent, Zion's at 35 percent. Lastly, a couple of things, the teachers are saying that, that they don't want extra taxes, they want the surplus. I guess there's a surplus of money right now. How about giving it back to us? And finally, finally, I just wanted to say that it has nothing to do with what you deserve or what you're entitled to, it has everything to do with, you guys are already getting paid in the upper echelon of the city of Zion.
If you do have any questions, come on up here, we'd like to hear from you. If you have a statement, and around 7:45, or excuse me, around 7:15, we're going to have Tony kind of come by and come and kind of answer some of these pertinent questions.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Ramey. I reside in the Beach Park District, and my son goes to Zion Benton High School. I used to work for the high school at one point, I'm no longer there. I think the entire staff is wonderful on a personal level, and I think the Board is as well. We just have a problem that we have to get resolved, but I do have issues when I have hard facts, that is public knowledge, at a public website that is accurate figures. These are from 2010. There's staff that make over $120,000 a year. The president of the Zion Benton Union makes $93,000. This was based in 2010. Since then, they've been, they have received raises. On the same site, which is GoFlow.com, anyone can go and see these records, there's a letter from Mike McHugh, who is the president of Lake County Federation of Teachers. This letter is dated December 2nd, which we have extra copies of, for anyone who would like to obtain one. Just to read three paragraphs, it says, "Dear anti-tax zealot, I know you'd like nothing more than to take jobs away from the public sector, so that you can keep more for yourself. I also know that the teacher baggers have convinced you that the only race worth competing in is the race to the bottom. And yes, yes, I know, the fair and balanced reporting that you listen to 24/7 must be correct, but please allow me to share some facts with you." Yes, facts. But before, or be forewarned, read this as fast as possible before your head explodes. Mind you, this is from the president of the Lake County Federation of Teachers.
He's educating our kids?
I have copies, I'll be more than happy to give you one.
Thank you. And again, if you do hear the bell, if you can just kind of finish up your last thought, that'd be awesome.
Hi, my name is Melissa Richmond. I've been a resident of Zion for 18 years. I have my third daughter going to Zion Benton High School. I've also helped negotiate my last employer, the community, so I understand the union background. I also worked for three years at an elementary school. I, I understand all three sides, but now I'm coming to as a taxpayer. I cannot afford it anymore. I have a house in Zion that's maybe valued, it's dropped $80,000, but you know, it's only valued at about $120,000. I'm paying like $6,400 a year for taxes, and where I've got houses in Lake Forest that might be three times or five times more the value of my home, and they're only paying double the taxes. You know, teachers, I under, I understand the problems they're having, but no longer on the backs of the taxpayers. We just, I, I'm, I'm mad, and I'm just, I don't know what else to do.
Guys, look, this is our forum, this is your forum. This is an opportunity for you right now to kind of speak or forever hold your peace. If there's any students or any, anyone else that own property here, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Richard Eaton. I've been a resident of Zion, a tax-paying resident of Zion since 1977, and I have absolutely nothing against teachers. I have utmost respect for teachers. In fact, I'm married to one who is retired, and she receives a pittance, though, of what the, some of the teachers I, I see. I have the same printout that Zion Benton teacher salary base that another lady just referenced before, so I'm not going to read that, but another source, if you want to get information, is ChampionNews.net or ChampionNews.org, and they list all of the salaries going back to 2010, the amount of time that people have been in their particular teaching positions. I will say, I am a public employer funded by the taxpayer as well. I work, thanks to Uncle Sam. I am witnessing, I'm into my second year of a cost of living freeze, and I'm not asking for any sympathy. I'm working because I chose to work where I am, and I'm very lucky to have a job, so I'm not complaining about that. But I will say, my income has been frozen in the second year right now. I just had my house assessed or appraised because I wanted to refinance. It went down also, like my, the lady who told me before me, by at least $80,000. It's not that big of a house to begin with. I pay a lot of taxes, about $6,000 a year, and I just, you know, I even went looking to see if I could find a teacher picketing today, I didn't see any on the street, because I want to discuss, I don't quite understand what this is all about, and I find it very frustrating. And look up also the pensions that teachers receive. I found three friends, three people I know, who are retired, they work less than me, I've got 37 years into the system, and I'm going to, my retirement is going to be half of what I found at least one teacher who has worked less than I have. So just think about that, please. Thank you.
There you go. It's, it's tough out there for all of us, it really is.
Hi, my name is Jordan Medorski, and I'm from West Harbor, and I wanted to say, in 19, or pardon me, in 2002, we passed a referendum to increase taxes, and since then, I think people have begun to understand that how public sector unions work is compared to private sector unions. And people like me, we're not against unions, we are definitely against public sector unions, because there has to be a balance of power. Both sides have to negotiate from a point of strength. And as it exists currently, when there is no profit motive, or no profit to be made, they hold all the cards, including keeping your kids out of school and perhaps delaying their graduation. I would like to offer somewhat of a solution, maybe perhaps, that we need to start thinking about, and if, at one point, I actually entertained the idea that we might get rid of unions someday in public sector, and I know, I've realized, I probably won't see that in my lifetime, but if that's the case, then what we should be doing is we should be treating a union in the more traditional guild sense of what a union was, where, right now, we have an issue, the fears we're going to lose, we're going, if we don't pay all the teachers more, we're going to lose new teachers, because they're not making enough. So why don't we approach it the way trade unions approach it, and after four or five years, they become journeymen? And whether you're a journeyman who's been working five years or 25 years, once you're a journeyman, you all earn the same amount of money. And that is, that is the trade-off that you make for collective bargaining. What the teachers have, and public sector unions especially, but especially the teachers, they kind of have the best of all worlds. They, they're treated as educated, college-educated professionals in one way, and then they have the ability to use collective bargaining in the other. And that's what has to change. We have to have a balance of power, and I want to thank you, gentlemen, very much for letting us think.
Again, if you can just be conscious of the bell, kind of finish up the thought, so we can keep everybody going here, we'd like to hear everybody's questions and statements.
Hi, my name is Tom Booth. I've lived in this community my entire life. I went to West School in Zion, Beach Park's grade schools before, actually Newport, before it was part of Beach Park, and went to Zion Benton High School. I sent two children to the Beach Park Schools and to Zion Benton High School. I have nothing against Zion Benton High School teachers. My children had some excellent teachers, and as a result of the education they had, they've gone out, they're doing very well. But this, I think, some points need to be made. First of all, the current median income of the Zion Benton High School teacher is $64,840. The median income of the district household is $57,400, so it's a difference of $7,300. In addition to the salary, the district paid to the teachers 34 percent of that salary in addition for their benefits. If you take the median salary of a Zion Benton High School teacher at 64.8, add 34 percent in benefits, that's another $22,000. That's a total compensation package of $86,885. The president of the Lake County Federation of Teachers, his salary last year was $242,437, that's the data on the website. His wife, who is the union delegate at Zion Benton High School, was paid $92,498 last year for a total... year for a total family income of $335,000. I have a serious problem with a family of that income inciting and encouraging teachers to walk out on the job so that they can extricate from this district's taxpayers more tax pay. Sherry on the public website talked about disconnect. Hearing people is where I feel is a serious disconnect. The teachers' union is living in a parallel universe. They have no idea what's going on in this community or the finances of this community. School Board, gang time!
Hello, my name is Luke Mewshack and I'm a senior at Zion Benton Township High School. I just wanted to come up here and say that, you know, you guys talk from either side, from the union side or the board side, but when it comes down to it, the only people I've seen really hurting is us. Because senior isn't the last step for most of us. We're all trying to go on to college. And I've already received multiple letters in the mail saying I need to send in transcripts for my seventh semester. And when it comes down to it, I can't do that if school isn't in session, if there's nobody there to do that for me. So either I need to write a letter to those colleges and say that, "I'm sorry, I can't send you in my, my grades," but who says that college is going to accept that answer? College might just deny me due to this fact. It could be my future going down the drain because the board and the union can't come to a decision close enough. So, I don't know, I'm just coming up here to say that basically try and come to decision.
Hi, my name is Morgan French and I'm also a senior. I think most of us up here are. Just going off of what Luke said, it's very frustrating for us, seeing not only our teachers and the Board of Education not come to a compromise, but being seniors, not being able to walk into this college process, hope, like hoping and knowing that we're gonna, we're gonna do fine. Because right now, there's no guarantees anything. Like Luke said, they need grade reports for midterms, being that we take finals after winter break and we don't know when we're going to take the finals because of this strike. We don't know when we're gonna send them the grade reports. When is that gonna happen? What do I have to tell this college or that college or my mom and dad for the most part? How do we answer our own questions and the colleges themselves? There's no, there's no way to, for us to move forward because of this strike. And it's really frustrating. Do you guys understand?
Do you guys understand that the checkbook is empty? The debit card won't work. It's gone, the money's gone. Do you understand?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm Katherine and I'm a sophomore at the, at the high school. And all I want to say is they need to make a choice now because our finals, if we don't take them, they're screwed, they'll be screwed up the rest of our life. So make a choice, teachers. Now, it's now or never.
My name is Sean Cash and I also go to Zion Benton High School. I'm a junior. I'm the editor chief of the school newspaper, but I'm not allowed to say that I'm doing anything with the newspaper right now because of the strike. But we've been covering it from the inside the whole time and the, the main question I really have is why is there so much of a disconnect? I mean, you, a lot of the people hear it from the newspaper also and they say, I, I'm confused because you come up here and you say there's these teachers making, I mean, there's, there's some teachers who are making, of course, six figures. And a lot of them are medians, there's a lot of people making way more than the taxpayers are. But there's also a lot of teachers who are, like, I bring up Mr. Hughes, who's an AP teacher, and he's, he's not making very much. My, my question is really, why is there such a disconnect? Why do they have mandatory raises after a certain amount of years? I know they're trying to take away that. But I mean, at other jobs, you don't just get a raise because they're so. I mean, that's really my, my question.
Hello, my name is Joe Azier. I've lived at Beach Park for 25, 30 years. Oh, I've lived here for about 25 years. And this is just an example of the disconnect between all government and government employees and taxpayers. I, I'm upset that I hear the average pay of a teacher is 75,000. It's great, I mean, it's great that they need to make a living. I've worked in the same job for 36 years. I work 2,080 hours is my standard year. A teacher works 1,080 hours a standard year and making more money than me. And I'm paying them. It doesn't make sense. I have heard, and maybe some of the teachers that are here can, can justify it or not, when you retire as a state of Illinois teacher, five years prior to retirement, you put in your retirement request. And that automatically kicks you in for a 5% annual raise for the next five years. So then when you retire, you're basically making full pay from the day plus some from the day you retire, or the day you decide to retire. Full pay. Does this make sense to any taxpayer? And these teachers, I'm, I'm tired of hearing about the first grade teacher that works 100 hours a week and grades papers till 1 o'clock in the morning. I've worked 80 hours a week a lot of years. I've done a lot of things to make where I am now. And I just want the teachers to realize, it's time for them to come to reality of the rest of us. And, and we just all believe that.
We'll, we'll, a few more questions and then we're gonna let Tony come up here and talk for about five, 10 minutes and then we'll, we'll answer some more, let you give out some more of your questions.
Hi, I'm Courtney Harmon and I work at the school. And I just want to know when we get to go back to work. Because personally, I don't want to be on strike. I understand that the teachers are upset. I understand that. They went to school, they got their master's degrees, they have student loans that they're still paying off. I understand that. But a lot of us are stuck between a rock and a hard place. A lot of us. And we get grief because we are in the union, so we do have to stand besides our teachers. But we just want to go back to work. Honestly, we just want to go back to work. You know, I see my coworkers here and they agree with me. I mean, when, I don't even understand why we're on strike and we're just not still having negotiations while school is still in session. Not just because we're trying to get rich, but because we love our community and we love our children. And with recent events and everything that happened in the school, the worst thing right now is that the kids are not in school. They need to be in school. So I want to know what can we do to get schools started and have negotiations be handled outside of school while we continue with daily activities? Because we need to get back to work. These kids do not need to be at home, you know. Personally, I, I'm paycheck to paycheck. I don't work, I don't eat. It's, it's a very simple equation. So we just, we do want to go back to work. You know, we're not against the community, we're not, you know, we don't want the kids at home either. I want to go back to work, I know my coworkers want to go back to work. So that's really all I'm gonna say.
All right, we're gonna take one more question, then we're gonna invite Tony back up here for a few minutes. We will try to answer each and every one of your questions, all right?
Should we just have these guys talk real quick?
You tell me.
Nobody else come up.
All right, we'll, all right, we'll get through the newspaper real quick, then we'll get Tony and then we'll answer some more questions.
Hi, my name is Lisa Richmond. I'm, I'm from Zion Benton. I'm a sophomore. I love school. And every teacher, I understand every teacher that is on strike right now, I, everybody wants to go back to school. And I love school and I want to see my friends. And I know some kids that don't, but I'm the one that likes school. I'm just saying that we should go back to school and let them do their problems. They should do it in the summer or something.
I tried to tell her to take a breath before getting up here. My name's Sean Satter. I live actually right by the high school, so I actually, anyways, I'll be here as a taxpayer. This is really a bigger problem than we're all looking at. It all starts at the top. I really believe that. I really, the one thing I would like to submit to you guys, if you're really that fired up about taxes, if you're really that fired up about the Board of Education, which by the way, they went out, they went without a contract for four years, right? Oh, all right. Well, anyways, I wouldn't want to be in either case, but I would say vote, get involved. I can guarantee that if you hit both the Board of Education and the teachers in the pocketbook, which is you go in and get your houses reassessed, guess what? They can't raise the taxes fast enough until it goes down lower. Now, I don't recommend that, but hey, that's the way that you can do it. There's a process, it's legal, call up the tax assessor. Anyways, with that said, with that said, this state had a major increase in state income tax. The guy that ran, the guy that got voted in, he even said he was gonna do it. He did it to save the pension of Illinois. So I'm gonna let you, tell you something, if there's no money, then there's a lot less they can do. These tactics that the unions are playing, it's, 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 they're, they're out for blood. I'm gonna let you know that. All right, thanks.
I have a hard time doing this because I worked at the high school for nine and a half years. But I just want you guys to know, I started out at $6.50 an hour. But when I quit nine and a half years later, I was almost at $14 an hour, not a raise I asked for, they were giving.
$1 an hour. $1 an hour.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Strucker. I don't want to repeat what a lot of people have said. As far as the students that came up here, it took a lot of courage. And I think that's what we're here for, we're looking out for their interests. It wasn't that long ago that I and others like them were in their shoes. But if, if this continues, the families that are going to send them to college won't be able to afford to keep sending them to college if they keep raising their taxes. The board is currently offering a 10% raise. How about offering a decrease? Teachers are only working 180 days a year and get every holiday and weekend and the summer off. I mean, let's be fair about this. 71%, or 71,000 unemployed teachers in this state, wouldn't they like to make an average of 72,000 a year? Teachers say they work extra hours and have to continue education, get ahead. Doesn't that hold true for the private sector workers as well? The average increase over the past four years for the teachers has been roughly 8% per year. Just things we have to really think about right now.
My name is George Dukas. I own a business in Zion. I've lived here all my life, had two children who went through the high school. I want to talk as a businessman to everybody. When the economy went south, I almost lost everything I had. So what I had to do is I had to reorganize myself. And that meant cutting my costs, my overhead. And I, right now, I'm doing half of what I used to do. But the reason I'm surviving is because I cut what I had to do and do what I, and what I had to do with my future to keep my business afloat. I'm a little nervous, I hope you understand. But we, we gotta do something. This is, and I'm basically talking about the unions. The union, I mean, guys, come on, wake up. We're in some of the sorriest times that this country's ever seen. If we don't do something now, we will never get that well done. We're gonna go to hell in the end, if we have a word there. We gotta do something now, and now the line has been drawn in the sand. Let's, let's stick to it. School Board, do your thing.
Hi, my name is Michelle Miller. I am a teacher at a private high school in Waukegan. And we actually have some of our students from Zion and Beach Park because their parents don't want to send them to Zion because they think Zion is such a bad school. As a teacher at a private school in, in Waukegan, I make $40,000 a year. That's with a master's degree and six years of teaching experience. It's not about the money, it's about the kids. And if these teachers can't do this for the kids, if they only care about the money, then we need to end this.
At this time, Tony, you wanna kind of come up here and, remember, you, you finish up, guys. Tony's not the enemy, all right? We're talking right now. Tony's working on the Zion Benton High School behalf, all right? So, you guys, bear, bear with, Tony's gonna try to answer some of the questions that you, you had out there. And then if there is any more questions, feel free to line up here and we'll take a few more.
I don't know if I should be a Green Bay Packers fan or a Bears fan on this crowd. I don't feel any hostility here. I mean, I've faced a lot tougher challenges as a, as an attorney in my day and I was an ex-prosecutor, so I've, I've been through the war. So this was very insightful, very helpful. We have some board members out there tonight. Let me just, let me just start out by saying, the board is being consistent with what they're hearing tonight, being financially responsible in the proposals. If you go again to the website, you'll see that the package, the final invest offer was made with every intention here heard tonight as far as the taxpayers hurting and the dire financial consequences your community collectively in Zion Beach Park, West Harbor is experiencing. So I don't know if this gives you any assurance, but they are consistent with the, with the financial realities. Let me try to address briefly, if I could, some of the comments here and hopefully that'll shed some light on some questions. And I, I have to commend everybody who came up to here tonight because it is tough to get up in front of a crowd. I do this for a living, basically. But with the students, I mean, you gotta commend them tremendously for coming up. And for all the, the adults that came up here. I mean, that is tough to do. So let me just go over briefly with you, if I may, because I've only got about 10 minutes, to address some of the questions. One of the issues was is that the, the students rightfully and the parents want to see the schools open, okay? So at this point, while the schools are closed initially, the Board of Education, along with the administration, Dr. Chris Clark, superintendent, is looking at options if the strike continues to open up the schools. I can't give you a specific target date because certainly there's going to be a lot of work involved if that happens. But they're very aware that the students should be back in school. So they are diligently working towards a plan. Let's hope that won't have to be implemented because hopefully the strike will end this week, let's hope. As far as negotiating and continue to negotiate and keep the schools open, I think we heard from one of the classified staff. I'll share this with you. During the last session that we had, the last 17-hours marathon session, the board president, Terry Paulson, is doing a very outstanding job along with Ken Lee, Preston Street, Tom Handyside, Christina McCullough, Tiffany Taylor, I miss anybody?
Lauren.
And Lauren Kern. They're all, they're all working in, in the taxpayers' favor, but balancing it with what's good for the students to preserve these programs. It's a tough job because bear in mind, they don't get paid. They don't get paid as elected officials. They took this on as their civic responsibility. And I can say this with some experience and knowledge that this is one of the most hardworking boards I have ever worked with. Very civic, very civic. To get back to, to the questions here, Terry Paulson asked the union negotiator, chief negotiator, and the union president, since we were making progress at, at these last two sessions, whether the union would be considered of calling off the strike, but continue consistently, almost around the clock, to negotiate. And unfortunately, they said no. So that has already been addressed. And bear in mind- And bear in mind, they have a right to strike. They have every, every right to strike under the law. But again, uh, that was requested of, of your Board President, Terry Paulson, and, uh, at this point, uh, they refused to, uh, to call up the strike while we continued to negotiate. The, uh, the, uh, the opportunity for test week. Uh, again, Board of Education, the administration is extremely aware of how important it is to take tests, especially for seniors. So rest assured that the test week, if in fact the strike continues, will not be lost. There will be school eventually. Whether it is during the strike, or hopefully when, when, when we get a, uh, an agreement, there will be a makeup, or there will be a test week, along with the sufficient preparation time. So for those students and parents that are concerned about that, it's not going to, uh, be eliminated. So there will be, uh, the resumption of, of the testing and also the preparation. One last issue, at least that I, uh, came up, or that I wrote down here, is, or two of them. Uh, there was mention about the surplus in the school district funds. That surplus is for a rainy day. And secondly... I understand. Uh, wait a minute, I do understand. The, the surplus is for, it's been accumulated within the guidelines that are set by the Illinois State Board of Education. Well, surplus is not an extravagant amount. It covers approximately three to six months of operating funds. That's within the guidelines of ISB, and sometimes it's even below. So to say that, again, the district has these funds to pay, accumulated funds to pay, significant amounts of money to the teachers, the Board of Education is committed not to tap into those funds, okay? And then lastly, uh, in terms of the, uh, the graduated salary schedules and guaranteed raises, I'm not gonna go into detail, but the Board of Education, again, the negotiating team especially, has come up with some creativity to try to level, if you will, uh, those increases. And while we're not there yet, uh, and credit, and credit to the union, they're listening. So in any event, um, we would ask for your prayers and your support. Uh, give the support to your Board of Education, give them emails, give them telephone calls. You also want to do the same thing to the union, if you've got concerns. Email them, contact them, Gurnee. Let them know your feelings as taxpayers in Zion Benton, one twenty-six. Thank you. Alright, who has a ticket they haven't used yet? Let me see, let me see who hasn't. Okay, this is your town meeting, people. We've got this room till eight o'clock, and, um, this is your time right now. If you have any questions, please come on up here. Tony's been gracious enough to, to come here tonight, uh, to, to listen to us, and, and, uh, he's gonna take somebody's, his back to the board, so... If you gotta, if you have something to say, this is it right now, so... And again, we're going back to, you've got two minutes to talk. Please, uh, be conscious of, uh, Chris's bell, and then, uh, so we can try to get everybody's comments in. At about seven forty-five, we're gonna invite Tony back up here again to try to answer one more time. And then at eight o'clock, um, we've gotta be out of here. I think the bar is gonna be open, but at eight o'clock, we've got, yeah. They've been very gracious to let us have this room for nothing, and we promised them we'd be out of here by eight, so we gotta try to keep and, uh, and do that. Alright, come on up here, young man.
I've been here all my life, fifty years. Uh, my parents go back to early days of Zion. What really bothers me is when we have such a great school, we got great town people here, but we hire out from the community. My wife has applied for, uh, a job at Zion three, four different times. They hire out. I can't believe that our people from Zion Beach Park, Winter Parlor, who understands their taxes and everything, understands what it is like for the money. So why don't we keep the jobs here? Hire our people if they're qualified. And as mad as it is, let the other people go back to Pleasant Prairie. Let them go to Gurnee, let them go to, if they want the ton of money, let them go to Lake Forest. Zion is always taking care of Zion, Beach Park, and Winter Parlor. So let's keep doing it. We got a great school board, we got a great, beautiful school. It keeps getting better. But if we keep getting people from outside our own district, or outside our own town, we're gonna go to hell in a handbasket.
My name is Edna Hillahan, and I have had seven kids go through Zion Benton School District, and I have one daughter left to go through, she goes to the New Tech High. And I have a daughter also that's over there that is a teacher. And I was told by her that they're not asking for any money. They're asking for them to leave the contract as it is. The superintendent keeps shutting down everything they're asking for. Everything they bring to the table, she turns it down. She gets a salary of two hundred thousand dollars a year. Okay, they put a freeze on her, it's fine. If I get two hundred thousand dollars, cap mine, freeze it. The teachers, they ask if they're gonna do any cuts, to cut the top and the bottom, leave the new teachers that just came in, let them have a life. Let them have something to come out, start out. You know, don't just cut everything, don't cut their health and their money. If you cut their health, and how they gonna pay, cut their money, how they gonna pay for their health? I heard the teachers not asking for anything. They're asking to leave the contract as it is. But the superintendent shuts down everything they ask for.
Hi, my name is John Jones, and my, my wife was the first speaker up here, so I speak for the same grandkids. If this is not an absolutely clear example of why more people should get involved, I don't know what there is. Uh, there, there are a lot of us, and I'm, I'm feeling myself as one of them, uh, that's, uh, pretty ignorant about all the details that are going on. And I'm ashamed of myself, and you should feel the same way. We need more people to get involved and watch what's going on, not only in our schools, but our state legislature. Uh, the rules for the unions and the teachers are not the same. The rules for the unions and the administration are not the same. One can do a lot more than the other. And that's, that's created by our legislators in the state Capitol, who are not doing their jobs, who are bought by whomever. We need to be involved more and more. I've made it a solemn promise to myself that I'm going to be more involved. I hope that's good news.
Again, we're gonna be out of here by eight, so if you have, uh, if you have something to say, come on up here. And again, you only get one time to do it, so this is your chance.
Uh, my name is Tim Carlson, and I currently teach fifth grade in Antioch. Um, I taught in Kenosha the last couple of years, middle school. What happened with me is I got laid off last year when three hundred and seventy-five teachers were caught in Kenosha um, because of the different legislation that came in, but mostly because the union wouldn't budge. I think that I lost my job because they were not open to opening our contracts. They didn't put up to a vote for the teachers. They just said that things are not gonna change, we're gonna keep the benefits the way they are and keep the standards that they had, which were pretty good. I got paid pretty well in Kenosha, and I got pretty good benefits. But what happened was all the younger teachers like myself got laid off because they couldn't afford us. They couldn't afford us 'cause there are cuts that are coming from the state level, and that's happening here in Illinois. And I think that the, the cuts that are coming here at the state level do affect the benefits and the pay that the teachers are gonna be making at Zion Benton High School. And they need to give, I think that they, the, um, they need to give them their benefits, they need to give somewhere, 'cause if they can't afford to pay, um, the teachers, the benefits and the money that they're currently making, they're gonna have to lay off teachers, and I think that would be a discredit 'cause the younger, um, energetic teachers that are in Zion Benton right now, the ones that are at the lower end of the total pool, will be the ones that are cut, and I think that'll be unfortunate. I think that'll happen in Zion Benton.
I'm Erin Hopkins, from New Tech, a couple blocks from now, here. And I got, like, young teachers at Nu- New Tech. So pretty much, like, the person just up here, they might get laid off. And pretty much, I like school, I get to see my friends and all that. I get to hang out with them, do whatever. I gotta do projects every day. Serious. Every single day, we're doing the same thing. So, yeah.
That's a season ticket for Bears games, and I know you ain't going. Third and two, right? I have no kids in any school district. My grandchildren are out of school. My great-grandson is not yet old enough for any school. But here I am. Why? Because you want me to pay more money. We got fixed income in our home people. We did not get a raise for two years. We just got a really big raise. One and a half percent. Wow. That almost buys a loaf of bread. Ye- the money isn't there. I don't know how you can pay something when there's no money. I can't go to the bank and say, oh gee, I, I need more money, so just give me some more. We're not the federal government, we don't print it here.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Booth. I am glad to see all of you out here tonight. Thank you for coming out and supporting our community. Um, I am a lifetime resident. My parents, my mother was a lifetime resident, my in-laws are lifetime residents. And, um, we really love our community. And I am here, I work for the school, I am a bus driver. And every year, for eighteen years, I have gotten a raise until this year. I went for negotiations, as I have in the past, and I told, um, our superintendent and our business director that we wanted to keep our jobs. So we would do what we had to do to keep our jobs. And some of you drivers out there, I see you. We took a pay cut to keep our jobs. All I'm saying is, we want to keep it, and we know that times are tough. We know what the taxes are in this community, 'cause we live here. How many teachers live in this community? Twenty? Out of three hundred? Okay, they really are disconnected, as we have said. Also, it's for the kids, okay? So we're the teachers for the kids. I did hear that there was one teacher at the library teaching the kids while these other teachers are on strike, and they're out walking she's in the library. And also one, who is interested in our students. I have many other things to say, and when you get up here, you forget. If I ran you off the road, I'm sorry, it was not my intention. But, uh, we love our community, and, and, you know, uh, like you said, we don't print our money here. We have to do what we have to do, and, uh, school board, hang tough.
My name is Jennifer, and I promised my husband I wouldn't talk, and he should, he should have known better. I have four children, um, two of which we had to pull out of the Beach Park School District because of different issues. I myself attended a private school from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. My teachers that, um, were, that taught in my school made approximately twenty thousand dollars a year. There is a ninety-eight percent graduation rate at my school. Um, of those ninety-eight percent, one hundred percent of those go on to college. I would like to know why we are paying six, seven, eight thousand dollars a year for students who don't end up going to college? That I pay those taxes. I want to know where the report card is for those teachers. If we're going to continually give raises, where's the report card for the teacher?
Hi, I'm Angela Callahan, um, third generation Zionite. And I'm very proud of my community, you all care very much, that's why we're all here. And we've come together in more difficult times. Is this some unnecessary drama to try to figure out these negotiations in the eleventh hour when maybe they could have done this before school started? At the compromise of our children who need to be reviewing for finals. I have a ninth grader, she's studying her notes right now. And of course, the seniors who can't get their transcripts out to go to college. Personally, I don't see where this money will come from. I took a pay cut four years ago, five percent less. I make what I made in two thousand and two. I've seen a lot of people on my block leave, leave the neighborhood, not come back. If our taxes go up, who's gonna stay in Zion? These houses are gonna be more empty. My neighborhood was assessed seven percent less. So you're getting seven percent less tax money out of my house than you did the year before. I don't know how they plan to afford this, something's gotta give, the kids seem to go back in school.
My name is Love Jordan, and I'm a senior at Zion Benton. My fellow seniors and I are currently in the college process, and as much as we would love to go back to school, our biggest priority is transcripts. The transcript's currently not being sent out, and deadline's fast approaching. We just wanna know, is there anything that will be done for the seniors that are merely hoping to be college-bound?
Um, I would just like to add that I know it's the teachers' job to care about us. They do care about us, I really think they do. But it's also, also their job to teach us. And a lot of our teachers give us, like, tons of homework, but we can only teach ourselves for so long. And with them quitting on us, what does that teach us as students? For us to, like, oh, you need to do all this homework, but they're not doing their job, so why should we do ours?
Good evening, my name is Lisa Knoll, and if you watch Channel Nine, you may have seen me doing my, I'm Really Cold dance on TV. We have been out seven and eight, seven to eight o'clock, Thursday and Friday. We are out letting those union members know, we don't support them. We can't afford this. I want to see more of you tomorrow morning, seven o'clock, out on Twenty-first, by Row Automotive. You can park in this lot because he backs us. Be out there, show your support, because they're out there on the news, they're saying things that aren't true. They're telling you that their, their, uh, plan is cheaper, it's gonna save you money. It's cheaper this year, it's going to cost you more money, I promise you this. There is no way. Their insurance issues, I can also promise you, their, their, their poorer plan is better than any one of this room. I personally took a cut in my insurance back to January one, I haven't had a raise in nine years. I can't tell you enough that I love our teachers, they deserve the world, but I just can't afford to give it to them.
My name is Stacy Rowan, and like Lisa said, we've been out there every morning, um, across from the teachers. I know that the teachers think that we are against them, um, we're really not. I'm a teacher in Gurnee, um, for a small Christian school, and I make probably one week of their salary. And I've been doing it ten years, and I do it because I love the kids, um, not for the money. And I just, we'd like to encourage you to come out and join us. You know, the union thinks that they're gonna strong-arm us into folding, and I just want the school board to know that we're behind them. And they keep making repeatedly comments about, um, you know, there's only seven of us out there. Well, on Friday, we had more high school kids, these kids are getting out of bed on their day off to come out and join us, um, you know, the head of the union said, "Snow day," think of it as a snow day. I think that's insulting. And one of the girls, actually from high school, had a sign that said, "Where's the snow, where's my snow?" So I just encourage you... So I just encourage you to join us and to show the union that we stand behind the teachers, but we also stand behind our board and say enough is enough.
My name is Brenda O'Neill, I have a granddaughter that's a senior at Zion Benton, and I only want to say one thing, I want to ask the teachers, go back to your union, tell them you can't get blood out of the tourniquet, so start thinking about the kids, please.
Hello, everyone, my name is Luis Martinez, I work for the Zion Benton Public Library, and I just want to say that these bargaining rights that the teachers are allegedly exercising seems to be a lot less like bargaining, and a lot more like holding students and taxpayers hostage.
Hello, my name is Kevin Miller, I'm a lifelong Zion resident, a ZB grad, and a substitute at Texas, otherwise unemployed. I'm having to leave this community to get a job, okay? This is what teachers and students wear at high school. Across it says, "Respect and Responsibility." I respect the teachers, they do a great job, and they're doing, the rank and file are being lied to by the union. I respect you, it is your responsibility to get back in the classroom.
Hi, I'm Melissa Snarles, I have kids in elementary and high school. Where I work, I haven't gotten a raise in over five years, I've taken twelve furlough days a year. Yeah, I haven't had a raise in over five years, I've taken twelve furlough days a year, and my insurance has been cut. And I'm union, but we do it because we need to keep our jobs so that we can keep our homes. And quite frankly, these teachers are showing the kids don't mean anything. They just want their money. I did read online what they're asking for and what the school offered, and it's ridiculous.
I thank everybody for coming out here tonight, let's try to get Tony up here one more time, and again, remember, he is not the enemy, he's working for us guys.
Just to clarify, I do represent the Board of Education. Addressing a couple of the statements made, one I really need to address specifically is the comment made by one of the residents, that the teachers wanted to keep everything the same, they wanted the same contract, leave as is, they weren't looking for a raise. Again, I'm not here, up here to disparage the teachers or the union, but just to bring the facts to bear. The current contract, the school district cannot sustain. If the contract was left as is, your revenue streams are diminishing, so as a consequence, to leave the contract as is would give raises to teachers in classified that are unsustainable by the district. So that's something that maybe was not really understood by the individual that came up here. Secondly, as far as the superintendent, she is one of the finest superintendents I've had the opportunity and privilege to work with. And she does not have the authority, nor would she shut down teachers' requests. I've known Dr. Chris Clark for approximately thirteen years now. She's very understanding, and she listens to every aspect of educational needs, both by teachers, other staff, and her bosses, the Board of Education. This Board of Education, as duly elected officials that you elected know, is to make the decisions as to the direction and the mission statement that the school district is going to carry out. So with that said, it was the Board of Education that structures proposals and submissions to the union during negotiations. It's up to Dr. Clark, other administrators, and the board's legal counsel to submit those proposals and collective bargaining, and to carry through the wishes of the board. And thirdly, as far as her contract, it's public knowledge, I don't believe she makes anywhere close to $200,000.
$219,000.
But you can check that on the website, but I'm not going to debate that. But in any event, and as far as the last issue I'll be able to address is, is that the cost of the packages, again, you can look on the websites, and I believe if you cost out the total package that the district has submitted, and the union's package, the district's package is less expensive to the district to take. So with that said, I want to thank you all for your indulgence in listening to me, and again, let's hope that we can get the strike resolved, and a fair and equitable contract will be entered into between the parties. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I hope the purpose was achieved to create a forum whereby citizens in the community can express their concerns, you get some information regarding the strike. A handout will be distributed at the door, that includes contact information for both board members and the union representatives that are negotiating. So please contact all of them, if you would, and let that be known. We also, should the strike not be resolved by Wednesday, we will be holding another forum to continue this conversation, and the video from tonight can be found on www.golflo.com. I want to thank Chris Amansky, he is a business owner of this town, and he is doing work for the board just to make sure all the information is out. And if anybody's connected with the union, we want to put out all the information, all right? So if there's more information, please get it to us, and we'll post it on the, we, wait, Chris, we'll post it on the website. I also want to thank Terry from WCRS, and your charge show is?
Wake Up With Cheer, Nick. We've got a new show this Saturday, it's called Outdoors With Cheer, Nick, on WIP, check us out.
Okay. I want to thank Kibbe Buckholz, videos with Kibbe in the corner. I also want to thank North Point Digital and George Foster over in this corner, we want to get all the YouTube videos out. And also Market Square for offering the space for free. We will need to be done here, but the bar will stay open if anybody wants to stay around and talk, but I just want to do what, I want to do one more shout-out. This all came to be, I became conscious of the fact that we had to at least wake up and realize that this is our, this is our community, and we have to do something because of a forum that Dave Ratliff put together. So I just want to thank Dave Ratliff for the forum that you put together. With that, thank you, everybody, and have a good night.